Call meeting to order.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member of the country present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Seckebobham.
Present.
Mr. Kazudin.
Present.
And Ms. Whitaker.
Present.
All board members present.
Next is the adoption of the agenda.
There are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented this week, I don't have anything to add or to strike on the agenda.
To make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Seckebobham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazudin.
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker.
Yes.
Okay, next, public comment, anyone have anything to say, Mr. Duden?
Going back to the question I asked the last time I was here, what's the status of the teachers in Russell County who need vaccinated?
Probably the 60%.
That happened.
Pardon me.
60% happened.
That happened, I mean periodically they continue to email me when they have that, there's no official reporting, if they choose to report that to me they can, but that's not a requirement.
In the fall, I presume, we're gonna have an all-in-class.
That is correct.
Is there gonna be any policy, or do you have a thought about what the policy will be for those of those classrooms where the teachers are not vaccinated?
No, there's no mechanism in place for that because teachers cannot be required to be vaccinated.
Can't be required by what?
Well, there's no policy to address it, there's no regulation to address it, and as of right now, it's emergency youth authorization on the vaccine, so nobody can be forced to take it.
That's not quite the way I view it, the CDC, but there's a bunch of other people ruling.
All the vaccines are currently, right now, still under emergency youth authorization.
I realize that, that's not what I did in that, but... The CDC says places, individual places, can handle it, I'm not asking you to do that, I'm just arguing for whatever reason.
You said masking, were you referring to masking or vaccine?
Well, my point, if they haven't been vaccinated, they should wear a mask. That's my position, I've thought, have you thought about setting a policy like that?
We'll go by whatever guidance KDE puts out as far as masking, if students or employees are required to do that, if they're not currently vaccinated, as it stands right now, as it is right now with masking, I've put out an email after the CDC guidance was put out, that nothing has changed for Kentucky Department of Education, I'm an employee, that goes with the state, I've got my mask on right now, but I've been fully vaccinated, but I'm under KDE regs, so that hasn't changed from there yet, which usually triples down from the governor, and then it has to make its way through, you know that as well as I do. As far as a policy goes for those that are masked or unmasked, I probably won't bring that recommendation to the board, as far as that goes, something to look at, ultimately that's up to the Board of Education to decide.
Right, who we have.
Absolutely.
And I'm not trying to suppress you, Mr. Ford, just put some thought into something along that line, because there are kids who have some autoimmune problems.
Certainly, yeah.
And that's my concern.
Sure, sure.
So one more pleasant question.
When are you not pleasant?
Well, sometimes I feel like it's caused trouble. Have we thought of doing anything for all the cafeteria workers who've done superb job in the last year in providing the meals, and so many kids and families needed, and others who didn't need it, still got it, I mean, I don't know what you can do, I would rather give them all a big raise, that's a separate issue.
That is a separate issue. We recognize all our faculty and staff this year provided the meal for each school, and I know just recently the middle school was the last school that participated in that, and I know their head cook, they sent me just a little thank you, and said, you know, that made us feel really special, that we got to enjoy all that, because the week before last was Teacher Appreciation Week, but I know in Russell County, we always like to celebrate that as Faculty and Staff Appreciation Week, because it certainly takes everybody to make that work. I'm sorry? Yes, it does, it absolutely does.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, too, in our media especially, there was a bunch of suggestions of, you know, a lot of times we have to make it, but we need to, you know, we need to dwell on policies, which we do a lot, but we're talking about maybe after, like, the senior awards yesterday, giving a total number of dollars that was awarded to the seniors for scholarships and so forth, so I asked Mrs. Bricks if she could come up with it, she said there was no way that she could come up with them, because some of the colleges, they had no idea how much they got, but she said it would be way over, probably two and a half million dollars, and that's just phenomenal, you know, to think that our kids have gotten that much money just from Russell County.
Don't stand up.
Just tell me that.
There were so many that had three-point, high, past 3.5 to four-point grade point averages yesterday, and that really was outstanding, there were so many of them, and they got full scholarships, you know, some of them, and it was just, it was uplifting, we were tired from the weekend, but that was really uplifting, to see all that. Anyone else? A special video message from Kevin Williams and Kevin's kids.
For the next two hours, if you want to prepare, we will, before you play, we'll sit down here, and you all can see the presentation. Kevin Williams and I have been talking, of course, he did his track concert last year, and this year, not this time, he may have something different, but he wanted to provide, to provide you all, the board with a nut base, and I invited him to do a video presentation, I told him, it's governed by the local media, and it's okay that it worked out, as to kind of where he stands, and what his future plans are going forward for, till we're back to normal, so, Mr. Richard?
Board of Education, and hello, Russell County, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you for just a couple of minutes tonight, Mr. Ford, I appreciate that, my name's Kevin Williams, Russell County, and went to school, grades one through 12 there, graduated Russell County High in 1983, that's a long time ago, and I live in Nashville, I've been a professional guitarist for 35 years now, but I'm still Russell County through and through, and nobody takes that away from me. I wanted to talk to you for a couple of minutes tonight, I would love to have done this in person, and it just didn't work out that way, so this is the next best thing. We've done a lot of this kind of thing through the pandemic, the last 14 months, Zoom calls, and you name it, I can't imagine the process of governing education that you've had to face through the pandemic, and now on this side of it, and I just wanted to say thank you for meeting all those challenges, the hurdles that you've had to jump over, and you've done it in such a great way, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. If someone were to not know me, we, I grew up there, and I didn't have very much, and a lot of people know my story, but if you don't, I always had somebody looking in on me, church family, neighbors, what have you, and the culture was quite different 50 years ago than it is now, I think we can all agree on that, and in 2014, I got together with some concerned Russell Countyans and said, is there a way we can help the kids, you know, our tax dollars go to buy education, they don't go to help with a lot of other things that kids may need, we know that self-esteem affects children in a major way, and so if they feel inferior to the next child, or they feel like they don't measure up, they don't try as hard in life, they don't risk, and they don't achieve as much, so we wanted to do something about that, and I just want to be there for kids like others were there for me. So, 2014, we started a little organization, it's now called Kevin's Kids, and I've done a fundraiser every year for that, up until COVID, the coronavirus put us under with an event last year that we had scheduled for the spring, I was very excited about it, and was talking to you about it, and plugging, and we were fundraising, and raised quite a bit of money, to have been short-circuiting in the process, to be honest with you, we didn't get to do that event, and then fast forward a year to this spring, and we were at a point, I had to plan this quite a bit in advance, you understand that, with a ramp-up time to be able to do adequate fundraising, and also for the concert itself, to get people in, and artists, and that kind of thing, so I didn't feel like we were at a point where it was entirely safe for crowds, we generally pack people into the First Baptist Church in Russell Springs at seating capacity there, I didn't know if everybody was ready for that, to be honest with you, and didn't know if it would be safe, I've always tried to do the very responsible thing, and in times like this, as this board knows, sometimes you don't know what to do, so we didn't do one this spring either. Now fortunately, I want you to know, from all that I know, our children have been taken care of, and this money has been protected well through this time, we didn't have a lot of expense in the year where they were out of school, and these resource managers that we utilize through the Resource Centers at the schools, pretty amazing people, and we have conversations every year about how to steward this money, it's called management, okay, and so you have to save and put back for times such as this, so the kids are gonna be okay, regardless of the fundraiser at this point. The other issue for me, since we're updating here, was not just the crowd and bringing that together, but was the economic uncertainty right now, a lot of folks are hurting, because they've been out of jobs, and trust me, I feel your pain, as a guitarist who was not able to tour for 14 months, I understand, so that's going on, and then on the other side, you have jobs that they can't get people for, I don't know the dynamics, and I don't know the answers to these questions, I just know it makes it an uncertain time to be able to...
This might go back to an email we received from the site editor today, that sites experiencing inter- generation, do you think that's...
It's up, yeah.
I think this is what's happened, we've had this experience, it's not normal.
To make a big push to people forgiving, so I'm hesitant at this point to do that, for that reason, I didn't want anyone to misinterpret my absence for any other reason other than what I just stated, I'm entirely proud of how these school Resource Centers have managed the money, the job they do, they go above and beyond, and when it comes to kids, you better be dedicated to above and beyond, or you just won't make a difference in their life. I look back at the teachers that affected me, and they were the above and beyond teachers, and you all have heard my stories, and you know my heroes, so I won't go into all of that, but that's what I want to be, and that's what this board is dedicated to, and that's why Kevin's Kids is dedicated to. Just wanted to say that, express my gratitude, give you that update, and say we are working on another concert, it could happen in the fall, if it doesn't, we'll go back to the spring next year, and we'll start right there, so I'm using my best judgment on that, always value your input, and Russell County, you've always come through for these kids. I will say, the fund, if you want to contribute, is going, so you can contact me, you can contact Russell Springs First Baptist Church, you can contact Mr. Ford, you can contact the radio stations, there are lots of ways, everybody knows how to get ahold of me, or whatever, so, we want you involved, and we are raising money, my money is there, I will tell you that, I don't want anybody to think that I raise money for something that I don't contribute to, that's already done for this year, so that's my heart, I love you, thank you, Mr. Ford, for this opportunity, God bless you, Russell County, and God bless our next generations.
So typical Kevin Williams fashion, we, it's always important to think about that, that's programming, what his annual concert, and what that means for our students. Brace this screen up, Mr. Richard?
Yes, sir.
I think it's time for Hannah and Asa to start walking down. We have such a special treat, if you all can see it... But if you all can see below there, and I, Ms. Whitaker, our official adjustment, I tried to say it, I'm trying to say it, a piano, it's got as tough as a visual child with it, but Mrs. Whitaker's son, Kenz, and his wife, Karen, Karen Quinn, had donated this grand piano, not a baby grand, that's a grand piano, to Russell County Schools, if you all are not unfamiliar with that name, that's a Whitaker family foundation that has been helping us out with the Hinton County Program for a number of years, continues to do, provides so many different opportunities for our Hinton County students, and that continues, so we kind of brainstormed, and we thought there's no other way to present this to Russell County Schools, and to the Board of Education, than by having our own hand in England, as many of you all may not know how well she can play that piano, and Mr. Asa Whitcock, I talked to Mrs. Hannah, I said, mine is a concert student, Asa, and that's why I thought it was a concert student that'd be willing to be playing today, so we appreciate his family being here with us tonight as well, to listen to that, so Hannah, I will turn it over to you, I know Hannah said it's about the place itself, so I'm happy to have her play it.
It's random, isn't it?
But we, just look at how elegant it looks to sit there, and I know I saw a video this morning, that Miss Hannah sent me, and he's out looking, but she sent it, she captured me playing it, and I happened to listen to it, so we so appreciate Karen Quinn and Karen Whitaker, and her foundation for this, for Russell County Schools.
I would just like to personally thank Mr. Ford, the board, Mr. Whitaker, and Ms. Quinn, for giving us this opportunity, that not only that Mr. Asa here, myself, can enjoy tonight, but for future generations, for years to come, can enjoy, but yes, Mr. Ford asked me to select a student, I knew Ronthe and Mr. Asa Whitcock, whenever I had the pleasure of teaching music in the classroom, Mr. Asa was learning the piano, and he played some for me, and so I thought, I'm gonna check him to see if he would be able, and no hesitation whatsoever, and so Mr. Asa here, he is a seventh grade gifted and talented student, he goes here from middle school, and I believe that he will be thoroughly impressed with his skills, him and I just, we just had a good chat, this morning, talking about the way that he learned to play, there's many different types of ways that you can learn, so he's going to brace us with his presence of playing, and then Mr. Ford has asked me to play a little special as well, so we hope you enjoy. Yes, I'm sure.
One. Thank you. Before we restart the meeting, I have to say, it brought a tear to my eye, because I remember many, many Saturdays and Sundays, visiting their house, waking up to loud classical music being played by their piano, and usually my granddaughter saying, Mom, you have to practice so early, and it brings back many, many memories, thank you all for playing. KSBA, Wood Member Academy of Studies.
We recognize students, and we have, including ourselves, we have additional students seated down the stage, as Ms. Whitaker looked at earlier, Ms. Murray could be with us this time, but everybody else was at the KSBA this past weekend, at a conference, and getting required training hours, and previously, the Tennessee School Board Association has recognized our school board members, it's referred to as the Academy of Studies, and so the school board members have to be very thoughtful in planning their conferences, they can't just go to any session, they can't go to any session, as long as it's within the specific areas of required training hours, but they can't just go to any session... But they can't just go to any session and not be methodical and not work through what's referred to as the Academy of Studies. So here's a little letter that points to Ms. Whitaker. It says, "Congratulations during 2019, your professional development efforts resulted in the successful completion of multiple levels of study within the Kentucky School Boards Association Academy of Studies. I am closing your official certificates and pins to recognize your achievements." So Ms. Whitaker is actually being presented this evening. She just decided she was going to knock them all out of her. She's already received her certificate for Level One, but this evening she's also going to receive her pins to what's referred to as Certificate Academy Studies for Levels One, Two, Three, and Four. So you're done. You've exhausted the Academy of Studies, Ms. Whitaker. And she has pins that represents each one of those. And again, that doesn't happen without, without hard work. Pins and certificates to represent each one. Mr. Kazook has previously received his Level One and Level Two during 2019. He has now completed his Level Three Academy of Studies. So he also has his certificate recognizing that and the pin for Level Three that was completed. They do offer remedial courses. Ms. Griffin, congratulations during 2019, your professional development efforts resulted in the successful completion of Level One. With that, I am then the Level Two of the Training Academy. So you have your Level One certificate as the initial, and then the Level Two and your pin. You guys are Level Two. We don't have it yet. Like I said, like I said to Frau, we still need her Level Two. But I think there's this particular predicament around you, so we'll, we'll get it recognized. If you guys are Level Two, then they don't have it here yet. Same thing to Ms. Joy. She's already got her Level One. And now during the 2020 year, you completed to Level Two. And you too, you see your certificates. And so there's a lot more. They can attest to that. Ms. Joy records earlier something that she had talked about in the session this past weekend. And board members spend a lot of time besides just in board meetings and going over material. They spend a lot of time in required training hours to get, to get their required training hours each year. But they always go above and beyond that as well. So glad to, to recognize them and we'll catch, catch Mr. Murray when his comes in. I said he's already got his Level Two also, and we'll get that passed out when KSBA gets that with us. So thank you all. Thank you for what you do. And I know it's, it takes it going to training, keeping it up, and we always learn. It's, it's good information to have. We appreciate what you're doing for us.
Thank you. Cambridge University 2021 Excellence Seat and Teaching Award Reciprocates.
This is two years in a row now that we have not got to go to Cambridge University and recognize teachers representing Russell County Schools in person. And we really appreciate Cambridge University and what they've done for us for a number of years now having this program. So we have a representation from elementary, middle, and high to begin to what's referred to as Cambridge University Excellence and Teaching Awards. And typically through the process and then they're selected and then we get to go to Cambridge University on a Saturday afternoon. That starts big morning. They have a wonderful state railways and rare house events and all the participants that get their award recipients can go on stage, get the picture made, do all that. We always have a great lunch. It's two years in a row now that we've not got to do that. They came very close this year. Thought they were maybe going to, but that did not, that did not get to happen. But we still wanted to, to recognize our, our teachers that went through this process and were nominated and received an award. So the first one will start with elementary school certificate recognition from Cambridge University. And they'll have official releases from the university as well. But in recognizing Ms. Stephanie Coffey as Cambridge University Excellence of Teaching 2021. All right. It's like students. She is. This is no stranger to Russell County School Board meetings. And the next one for Russell County Middle School, Middle School recipient is Dr. Joan Parker. And how many of you are ready? The town's going to be recognized and faculty staff. Start with all the service. Now we did work the same. Congratulations. And our House School Cambridge University Excellence of Teaching Award recipient is Ms. Van Eeck.
See you do that.
You know, we probably had, we had workers comp. And that's only intended for approval tonight. Congratulations. Have another.
Let me K U's nomination for Outstanding Teacher, Lindsay Gibson.
Yes, we have a Middle School recipient from Western Kentucky University, Distinguished Educational Award finalist. And it's Lindsay Gibson. Their Dean of Education Department, so the certificate to this one, recognize her. It's got a great crowd. On the way to church. Thank you all and what you do for our student today is, it's, it's great to recognize students, but it's also great to recognize faculty staff who make you work and have you students. Thank you all.
And Consent Agenda Outlets.
Yeah, the Consent Agenda Outlets, I have approval minutes, paying the bills, construction funds report, school activity funds report, financial report, field trips, and the Treasurers' monthly report for April 2021. Ms. Carnes.
Okay. Treasurers' report for the month of April 2020, 2021. Balance on head at the beginning of the month was $7,48,056.59. Total receipts for the month were $4,447,190.41. Total of the receipts and beginning balance, $11,495,247 even. Disbursements for the month were $3,247,800.32, bringing the balance at the close of the month to $8,247,146.68. For the fund balances in the general fund, Fund One, $7,192,407.86. In Special Projects Fund Two, negative $432,602.61. District Activity Fund Twenty One, $3,784.90. Capital Outlay Fund Three Ten, $135,392. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $132,189.46. Construction Fund, Fund Three Sixty, $715,562.23. Debt Service Fund Four Hundred, Zero Dollars. Food Service Fund Fifty One, $497,085.14. Financiary Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,627.70. The total cash and bank for all the funds, $8,247,446.68.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. As I noted last time, we, we've received the other reimbursement on the Work Ready Skills Initiative Grant. And we're still carrying a balance, a naked balance on the construction fund. But back up after that last big reimbursement, I sent that to you on email. It's back on the, back on the positive. No changes or amendments. I recommend approval of the Consent Agenda Outlets.
Need a motion?
Excuse me, I'm gonna motion that be approved, the Consent Agenda Outlets.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Segalbald?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ed Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center proposal request twenty-eight fire alarm systems.
Okay, the new, the new center, it's considered a separate building because there's a firewall between that and the existing high school with the way it was constructed and built. So it's at least, it's rated as a two-hour fire rating between the two buildings. So by code, the two fire alarms in each building are not required to be synced. They weren't designed that way to be synced. In essence, you know, there could be, Lord forbid, a fire in the ATC, the new building and the high school still having construction. Of course, we wouldn't do that, but I'm just saying hypothetically that could be the case and vice versa because the two fire alarms are not, are not synced together. It's not a code issue. Building inspectors already been there. It's designed. That, that's all fine. I did ask them, just from a school perspective and just thinking about how schools operate, what it would cost for us to join the two fire systems together so they would be in sync. By default, if one went off, the other one went off automatically, so there would not be any delay. We can only imagine, obviously, if the fire alarm went off in the new ATC via phone call or just hearing it or whatever, somebody at the high school is, is likely going to know it within seconds. Sometimes seconds matter. I would just feel more comfortable. And so I asked them to get this proposal request together. For $8,562.61, they will join both of the fire alarm systems and will have two panels that will essentially be there together. Now, there is, there are some logistics involved with that. If, if the fire alarm goes off, if somebody pulls a fire alarm, you can't just go to that one and shut it off. You have to have them both in sync, so you would just simultaneously shut off both fire alarms. Not a big issue. To me, we're dealing with, they're high school students. I understand that, but they're still students. I would just feel better if we spent the money and we tied both systems together. If one fire alarm goes off, the other one goes off. So that's what this proposal request twenty-eight is about. The cost breakdown, both of them included the rate of pay, inspections, subcontractor costs. You have the complete breakdown and then you have just the overall PR. It's been approved by the construction management and it's been approved by Sherman Carter Barnard with architectural as far as processing with this. I'm happy to answer any questions if, if I can, but in a nutshell, it's just exactly what I've described. It will combine both fire alarm systems by address. One twenty-one sixty-four South Highway one twenty-seven, the high school is twenty-one sixty-six South Highway one twenty. All those things is considered two separate entities, even the ledger bill. And you know, if you had two buildings built out here on, on the street, you wouldn't have tie, fire alarms tied together. Obviously, it's two separate buildings. But, but it's a school and it's got kids. So we'll, we'll take whatever directions you all want to go. I realize it is eight thousand dollars. We do have that money in the contingency fund. I just feel like it just provides just a little bit of extra protection.
It wouldn't pay, it wouldn't be worth the kids.
No, and sometimes seconds matter.
I think it's a good idea because fire is something you don't play with. More protection we can have, better it is.
Again, I do want to stress, this wasn't anything that was left out. You know, the electric engineer didn't leave something out. The architects didn't miss something because it's, it's not code. It's, it's not required. Everybody's blessed. We could go on right now and never have an issue with it. As far as state space, you know, I think it was. So if you all approve this, it will give me authorization, we'll look forward on this and then I will, it gives me authorization to, to process it and authorize the superintendent to complete the change of reports, things I have to sign up on.
It does seem a little high, I thought too, but you should, you have the money in.
At the contingency fund. Yeah, it's a lot, you know, it ties two. You know, the fire alarm works whole building and then the other fire alarm works whole building. And then they'll install the panels that tie those two together. It is, I mean, it is, you know, just to think about it. But then in the grand scheme of that, fifteen million dollar project is, is not as much either. But it is eight thousand five hundred dollars and change.
I guess it is our kid to be very cheap.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. My clerk, frankly, probably was laying for a comfortable college or center. Your word is presented and authorized, which is four, to complete the change of reports.
Thank you all. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Segalbald?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Tentative Budget.
KRS one sixty dot four seven, that requires local boards of education to adopt the Tentative Budget. Fiscal year twenty-two Tentative, Tentative Budget has been attached to the review. The working budget will be presented in September. This is the middle, if you will. We worked on the first one back in January. That was essentially a carryover. Ms. Carnes, I'll let you, it's twenty-one point five expenditures and revenues. Give the highlights of them.
Not a lot different from the working budget that we're currently working on, but this is the one that will start June, July one. We'll operate on this budget and it'll be approved, the working final budget in September. We've got more in our contingency because we finally got ourselves up to that three million dollar spot that we weren't working towards for many years. So there is a little additional in the contingency because we need to think of that as zero dollars and then, you know, go, go up from there. That's not something we need to think about spending. That's our safety, our safety benefit that we need to have. So other than that, I mean, it was, it was very, very similar to, to our current budget.
One thing Ms. Carnes and I have been talking with and with people and working on is the issue with the state's full day kindergarten funding and what that could mean for the district. Now, that, that happened right now. That's just for this year, this, this fiscal year that the state, we very much appreciate centralizing representative grants from passing that. Where I'm going with that is, of course, the state did not approve any dollars and put out any dollars for employee raises. What Ms. Carnes and I have talked about is looking at what that would mean on the full day funding, what that specifically means for Russell County and what percentage of, of a raise we could come to you all with in June for employees that still pass it before the next fiscal year starts at July one. The only caveat of that is the sustainability for that. So what if the legislature only does it one year? You know, what, what does that mean? So that's a lot, a lot of action we would have to talk about at that next meeting in June as to what that full day kindergarten looks for for Russell County that we've been paying for, for, I wouldn't know how many. Ms. Carnes might know it off the top of her head, but a long, long time. And a lot of the general public never did realize or understand that prior to this coming up year, fiscal year that we're getting ready to go into, July one, the state only funded that at, at half, at half. So every, every teacher, every instructional system, all those things was funded by the state only half. And then the local district, it was up to them to fund the rest, but you didn't have to offer full day kindergarten. And then the local district, it was up to them to fund the rest, but you didn't have to offer full-day kindergarten. There is no requirement that you offer full-day kindergarten. Of course, we, we know, we can appreciate the benefit of that. So I do recommend the approval of the fiscal year twenty-two tentative budget. Of course, certainly, the amount of expenditures and revenues of twenty-one point five. And Ms. Carnes and I will have some additional information and some breakdowns on, on what that could look like for you all regarding employees with using those funds now that the state has funded full-day kindergarten for potential raises for employees. It's been a number of years since employees have been able to, to have a raise, and they certainly deserve that. So this money is additional money coming into the district. Again, I cannot say, and cannot emphasize enough, that what ifs, they don't allocate that next year. We certainly don't want to eat into that, as Ms. Carnes referenced, that three million zero. That is a really good safe place for a district our size with our budget, and as she always referred to, that's our zero. That's what, that's what, you know, the state refers to their rainy day fund, that's our rainy day fund. And that's when things are bad, and you know, the state's cuts, it comes in here in the middle of the year and it's cut your, your seat funding or whatever, we have to have something to go, go back on. And you look at three million dollars being zero out of a twenty-one point five million dollars, that's not a whole lot of money out of that. That would be the only, only biggest concern that we would have about that full-day kindergarten funding. But we'll have you some information, and we can act on that, or you all can act on that if you so wish, if it's, we think it's feasible. And we may need to, very well, we may, we may need to wait until the legislature meets in January and that that's funded again, and then we can best plan for the next fiscal year. But it's certainly something that we want to, to have some information for you all a little bit more coming, coming June, one of the June meetings, probably the first one, if not before, because June thirty is right there at the end, or right before the start of fiscal year. So that's a side note.
I think it's seventy-seven, seventy-eight, the state funded it. And then after that, I believe it was only half funded, I may be wrong almost, but seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-eight was my first year teaching kindergarten. And so it's been a long time.
It's been a long time the districts have been correct. And again, we, you know, we appreciate that influx of dollars this year. And I know our central Y speak on that, it's, you know, districts can use that, have some flexibility to spend that money because they've always been allocating it towards kindergarten, so. But I recommend approval of the fiscal year twenty-two tentative budget, the amount of expenditures and revenues of twenty-one million, five hundred thousand dollars. And what Ms. Carnes said, the working budget that will actually carry out the rest of the fiscal year then is, this is the second and the third that will be presented, that will be at the September school board meetings.
I might motion to approve the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two tentative budget.
Awesome.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Capital funds requests.
And this is something that, to some fashion, you all seen every year, depends on how, what route we're going to go with it, that for the twenty twenty-one school year, the year we're in right now, school districts are allowed to request the use of capital funds subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Education, the Kentucky Department of Education, and for certain expenditures is what we could request the money be moved for or used for. I'm requesting for your approval to request from the Commissioner the use of remaining capital funds in the amount of six hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-two for fiscal year twenty-one for the purchase of the buses, other equipment, and installation of an additional freezer at Russell Springs Elementary School, and the property insurance. As we referenced earlier, allocated for the buses and the movement of that money for the freezer, and this formalizes the, the paperwork part that we have to do by board approval that Ms. Carnes needs. So I recommend approval from the Board of Education to request from the Commissioner for the KDE for the use of our remaining capital funds in the amount of six hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-two for fiscal year twenty-one for the purchase of buses, another equipment installation of an additional freezer at Russell Springs Elementary School, and a property insurance. So that freezer that you all already approved, we could use our capital outlay to pay for that.
I might motion to back that.
Awesome.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two principals combined budgets.
Again, this is a routine agenda item that you all see every time this time of year. Each year, the school principals are required to submit their school's budget. A copy's been attached to the review. I recommend approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two principals combined budgets for each school. Okay, thank you. I'll say. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Workers' compensation for, workers' compensation for school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
The tax code from Cornell and Higginite Insurance Agencies for Russell County Schools to continue with the Kentucky Employer Mutual Insurance, what we refer to as KIMI, for workers' compensation for school year twenty-one, twenty-two with an estimated premium of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents. If you remember last year, we switched over to using KIMI from Church Mutual because our policy, our premium had went up with, with Church Mutual, and we have been with KIMI in the past. We have had a very good year, probably due to a lot of reasons, not, not in personal classes and, and things like that as far as, as workers' comp. But I recommend that the Russell County Schools continue using Cornell and Higginite Insurance Agency for KIMI to provide workers' compensation for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And we're, we are receiving what's on that next page, the preferred rate with that. So it brings the policy up to eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars. They've been good to work with, Ms. Carnes had no issues, any clients are working through things, and they're, they've been very responsive as they got into the past.
I might motion to approve the workers' compensation for school year twenty-two.
Awesome.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Head custodian position for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center.
Okay, the new center, the Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center, it's a state-run facility, and thereby the Kentucky Department of Education, they pay for one custodian that's placed there. But with this new facility, due to the size of the building and the fact that we're going to have evening classes offered there, I needed a custodian, a head custodian placed there that is an employee of Russell County Board of Education. So it'll be, the head custodian is eight hours a day, two hundred forty days. Of course, the evening hours, they would need to work that, that second shift. But you, we have much pride in that building, and the state does send us dollars for maintenance and upkeep and things like that, on that, and we can code that to, to this. This position can be coded to that, but we, I know that you all share their desire to, to take, obviously, take care of that building. Could not expect one custodian to take care of that and to keep that building taken care of.
Or two, can it?
Yeah, I know, that, that's the truth, yeah. One thing though, that's kind of the ATC, the, the, in the shop area, Mr. Kazoo knows this, the instructors and their students take care of a lot of the shop areas, yeah. So I recommend that the head custodian, eight hours a day, two hundred forty days position be provided for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. So this is a new position, and that has to come from the board. I have no authority to, certainly to, to create a position.
I'll make a motion to create a head custodian position for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
It's a beautiful building, we can keep it that way. Computer science, information technology position at Russell County High School for Work Ready Skills Initiative grant.
Um, that grant, it seems like, in some ways, it seems like yesterday, and in some ways, it seems like years ago, but in reality, it was several years ago when we wrote the Work Ready Skills Initiative grant that our district was blessed to receive, the five point seven million dollar that afforded us the opportunity to expedite building our, our Air Technology Center that's soon to be opened. But nonetheless, part of that grant, when we wrote that grant, is that we would add an additional computer science, information technology position at the high school for that. And so that new classroom that you see, that, oh, well, they've been through that facility now, saw the pictures there with, with, that Mr. Smith presented at the working board meeting. That's where this new position would be housed, pending your all's approval. The board can provide a discretionary position to Russell County High School certified teacher allocation because this is, by the grant, we said that we would add this position. A high school, just like the other schools, they're allocated staff based upon their, the number of students. And so the, the boards do have discretion to add what's referred to as a discretionary position. So I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education approve a discretionary certified position for computer science, information technology teacher at Russell County High School. And I also want to note, and Ms. Rita, you feel free to chime in, Ms. Rita and I've had a lot of conversations with, with the State Department in preparation for this, but I'd like for the public to know that there is a route for folks that are in industry. So if they work as a computer technician right now, or some type of computer science and, and that, and have years of experience in that, I encourage them too to apply to this position because just like their teachers at the, at the Air Technology Center, those folks, they have true work experience, experience, they're, they're in the industry. So certainly someone that has went to college and has a teaching degree for computer science, certainly welcome those applicants. But I also want to encourage anybody out there that has the industry experience of working for these career technical education classes, there's a pathway for them as well to be employed and do that. And sometimes that's really awesome because they bring real practical field experience into that, into that opportunity. So we'll get that word out as well, and, and pending your all's approval, Ms. Rita will take care of the posting and stuff for us, but I just wanted to mention that. How do you think of that, Ms. Bulls?
Yes, Miss Ford, with that writing grant, uh, that IT, computer science, now they changed the name to computer science, that, that actually was really a big factor. I mean, I know all the hard work and hours of going into writing that grant was, they all just did a fabulous job on that, but you ended up, you had five sectors, and that is one of the sectors, the IT, computer science, that's in those. Our area vocational school has all those others. And then at the high school, we have one IC computer teacher already. But probably couldn't have got the grant without that IC new position. That, that was a big important factor to put into the grant, to be able to rebuild the big building and everything because of a high demand, high wage job for that type of position. That, that was a big, big important part of giving the grant for the high school to benefit.
It was, because it is one of the five primary sectors of, of jobs in media, history, and technology.
Couldn't have been any sector, it had to be one of those five, which Miss Sarah Roy's school has called, the others covered pretty, pretty good. It's just in the IT part, that was, that was a strong point for us to get that money for that building.
And it's, and it's not an issue at all, it happens, although, this, this employee, pending your all's approval, will be housed in the new ATC, but they'll be an employee of the Russell County Board of Education. Where all the other ones, it's a state-run facility, they're under Miss Roy's direction. Of course, everybody works together in a cooperative anyway, but I just want to make that discretion that this is an allocation to the high school to be housed in the Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. And in a state-of-the-art classroom, you all seen it, and the opportunity for that teacher to come in there and really excite students and make some awesome things happen. That's why I'm really encouraged, anybody that has industry experience or, or the, or certainly the certification to, to talk with us, and we can, we can talk about some options on that. Thank you, Ms. Rita.
I might motion to approve the work for this position, a certified position for the computer science teacher in the first class.
I'll say.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
So.
Revised job descriptions.
Okay, you all know of this, past several years, I've been bringing to you revised job descriptions as, as the need arises, and here are two job descriptions attached to the review and approval. The instructional coach job description has been revised to update position responsibilities, and it will encompass both of the positions that we currently have that our folks are working in that, the, the role of instructional coach. And then at the previous board meeting, you all approved primary instructional assistants for each of the elementary schools based upon their first-grade classrooms, and this is a job description for, for those positions as well. So I recommend that revised job descriptions be approved as presented.
I might motion to approve the revised job.
Awesome.
What's that, Ms.?
Ms. Joey.
Ms. Joey, go ahead. And Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabaut?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Approved Senate Bill one twenty-eight assurances, accept school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dual requests.
I'll try to think of the time, how can I make it as tough as I can?
You did.
No, okay. So in essence, these are the, the assurances for Senate Bill one twenty-eight, but it gives, it gives parents the option for, um, the redo. And so the big thing for that is our returning seniors. So if you grad, by law, if you're a graduate, if you have reached the number of credits, you have to graduate. So we cannot let somebody that has a number of credits not graduate. They have to graduate, but they can come back and receive a supplemental year, and, excuse me, the high school's been working with all those students. Everybody else, really, eleventh grade down, it is absolutely a repeat year for them. So, you know, if they had chemistry, if it was a high school student, or maybe it was a third grade student at Jameson Elementary School, it's a repeat year for them. Had a lot of good conversations with some parents and some questions, and it's still pretty fluid. So we initially started off, started off with eighty-one students that at the very beginning that had requested it, and now you see it's, it's went down to the high school at ten, middle school has seventeen, Jameson Elementary School twelve, Salem five, and Russell Springs Elementary School fifteen. But I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, by the time the school year starts, it will be less than that because the schools are just really having some good conversation. The parents are, are having some good conversations and asking some questions. And I've attached those documents to you, the Senate Bill one twenty-eight bill, KDE's frequently asked question document, and the Kentucky Department of Education guidance documents. Regarding our seniors that will graduate and come back and do the additional school year, of course, they're eligible for sports, they have to meet the academic, number of academic hours. A lot of the colleges, although they are not required to offer dual credit because the students are not dual enrolled because they are graduated, so the college has to recognize them as graduates, they're still offering our students that discounted rate. So a lot of those students, their supplemental year will be taking college classes, so that's good. And then some of them will also be taking some new classes in the Air Technology Center. So I'm also glad that those seniors get to experience that facility. So we could sit here all day and, and, and talk about, you know, the pros and cons of Senate Bill one twenty-eight as, as, as written, but at the end of the day, our faculty, staff administration, they have a lot of conversations every year about students that may be retained, and there are students beyond this that the school has reached out to, have been with, with parents that are being retained. The number presented to you here today are absent, are, are numbers that parents initiated under Senate Bill one twenty-eight that they wanted their child to stay and have to hear again. A caveat again, too, by statute, the student had to be enrolled in Russell County Schools by May one to request this, okay? So they could be in another county and request this from us and then move here. They could not be enrolled in a private school and then request this to me. They could be enrolled in homeschool and request this. The law says, May twenty-first, by May first, they had to be enrolled in your school district to make this request, so that's another caveat. But I recommend approval of the Senate Bill one twenty-eight assurances, which we will develop plans for the students and accept all parent guardian and/or students. And I mention student because if they are over eighteen- and I mention student because if they are over 18, the student will be the one that officially makes that happen for them because they're, they're their own guardian, uh, do-over requests. So our, our counselors and our principals and our assistant principals, uh, have had a lot of, of, of good conversations with, with parents, and I'll just say this publicly too, I appreciate that I was having this conversation with the parent the other day, that just had, uh, call and ask questions and, and just didn't make any assumptions and what that is, what that's about, and just, um, having that open line of communication has been really, really good, uh, some conversations that we've had with parents.
Well, I give the recommendation for A T C 128 Assurances and say often, Senator Harrow, who's...
I'll say.
Is there a second?
Yes, Ms. Brandon. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabala?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Professional Leave of Absence.
Okay, Mr. Joel Wolford has been served as Vice President of the Kentucky Education Association, has requested a professional leave of absence for the school year 2021, 2022, school year, and his letter of, of request is attached. I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education grant Joel Wolford a professional leave of absence without pay for the 2021, 2022, uh, school year, just as I noted last, last school year, uh, when Mr. Wolford presented this, and it's, it's really cool that we have a, a local educator that is, uh, representing, uh, serving as Vice President of the Kentucky Education Association, uh, but it is without pay and with, with the board's, uh, approval, Mr. Wolford is guaranteed a position, he's not guaranteed the same position that he left when he was, uh, previously, uh, employed by the Board of Education, just a clarification on that. Uh, but I do, uh, certainly commend his work and, and Mr. Wolford, Joel was great to reach out to us and talk with us and, um, recommend his professional leave of absence without pay for the 21, 22 school year. Think this will be his, is it third year? No, I think it's, yeah, this will be his third year, yeah. Yep, kept up on his third, yep.
I'll have a motion of the grant, just to look forward to the professional leave.
Ms. Brandon, your second? Okay. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabala?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Contracts and Memorandum of Agreements Approval.
Okay, we have the following kinds of contracts and memorandums of agreements, and we have our, our direct, that's Green River Regional Educational Cooperative Membership, uh, that's our educational cooperative for Russell County Schools for the 21, 22 school year, uh, our Commonwealth Family Medical Center, uh, Saddle Life Clinic Agreement for the 21, 22 school year. As you, um, note, and we are so appreciative, appreciated of them, uh, that contract includes that Commonwealth Family Medical will continue to reimburse each of our school nurses salaries as they have, uh, for the past several years now, uh, with that group, and, and we just so appreciate, uh, our partnership with the, uh, Commonwealth Family Medical. Uh, we have our agreement with Lake Cameron Hextar for 21, 22, our auditor's contract with White Company for the fiscal year 21 audit, that's for, uh, the school year that we're closing up, Family Resource Use Service Center Commonwealth of Kentucky Agreement, and, um, our Vision Itinerant Services Contract with Red Railroad. Well, I recommend approval of the contract and memorandums of agreement that's been approved by our board attorney.
I might motion to approve the contract and memorandum of agreement that's been approved by our board attorney. I'll say.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabala?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Russell County Schools SY 2021, 2022 Certified Evaluation Plan.
Ms. Barrett is here to go over this, um, I know you all received this to review, uh, several days ago, one of them that had the comments to let you know that the changes have been made. Ms. Barrett?
So you all had a long evening, afternoon and evening. Um, as Mr. Ford said, um, when I sent this to you all, I put the review comments so that we wouldn't have to, you know, be up here so long. There wasn't any changes that were required from K D E this year for our Certified Evaluation Plan. In the past, sometimes they pushed down a lot of new things that had to be changed, but over the past few years, they have, uh, put that back on the district to, um, make needed changes as they see fit. We have, uh, Certified Evaluation Committee, it's called the 50-50 Committee, where it is comprised, uh, 50% administrators and 50% teachers, and the updated names of those committee members are on pages three and four, and those were highlighted on your copy as well. When I send that out after approval, um, I will send the, um, no highlights to the principals and the teachers, and then they will go over this within the first 30 calendar days, um, of recording for the 21, 22 school year. Most of the schools go over this plan with their, uh, teachers on the first day, uh, opening day that they get with their, um, staff. Uh, page four has the assurances, and that is the paper that Mr. Ford and, uh, Ms. Sheila Whitaker will have to sign, and this does have to be sent to K D E after your approval, uh, for their review. If they see any issues with anything, then of course they send it back. Um, I'm just going to go over a few of the, the big changes, and, and nothing was big, but, um, when the committee met, since our school year has started a week or two later than it had in the past, then some of the teachers on the committee asked if our professional growth plan, which they have to do every year, could be extended a couple of weeks. So in the past, and this will do on September the 15th, and they requested that, that be due on September 30th, uh, so we changed that date, um, and those changes can be seen on pages 19, 30, and 34. There was a lot of discussion about decision rules on, once a principal evaluates a teacher, the board adminis, uh, Mr. Ford, uh, evaluates an administrator, there are decision rules that they have to make, so they get graded in four main areas, and then they have to look at this chart, and so we spent a little bit of time looking at the chart, and we changed one word, we changed an "and" to an "or," and I'm sure that you all have, uh, reviewed that, and those change, uh, it's the same change, but it's on several different pages, on page 25, and then again on pages 53 through 56, which is the forms that they, uh, complete for the teachers. Uh, there was also another, uh, requested change, uh, Ms. Diane, one of our committee members and principal of Jankston Elementary, um, there is a pre-observation document that the teachers fill out prior to being observed, and there are some questions that are listed, um, the sub, discussion questions on the left-hand side, and she said it would help clarify to the teachers where they need to look on the framework to answer those questions more fully and completely. So, um, we added those references to the, uh, framework for teaching on page 43. And the rest of it was just a cleanup of some of the, uh, forms and documents to make them a little bit more concise, not too many, um, some of them had too many words or too many parts or too many sections, uh, so that's pretty much the, uh, changes for your 21, 22 Certified Evaluation Plan. Any questions?
I appreciate Ms. Barrett, how Ms. Barrett handled that committee too, because it is, uh, you know, taking that input, just like the teacher said, you know, we, we start school a little later, we need a little more time to do the permission, and those things can be worked through, and, and it is an open dialogue of, of that completion of that, of that plan, so we appreciate your work, Ms. Barrett.
I'm in for a motion to approve that question, that Certified Evaluation Plan.
Yeah, Ms. Brandon, second. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabala?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Personnel Reports.
Personnel Report, Courtney Poston, hired Salem Elementary School Custodial Physician. Dalton Robinson, hired Russell County Middle School Science and Self Studies Teacher. Lindsay Brockman, transferred within high school to this, uh, vacant science position. David Michael Lewis, hired as one of our alternative school teachers. Tammy Emerson will be retired effective June 1st, 2021, wish her, uh, the very best, Ms. Pam Robertson, retired effective June 30th, 2021, and again, welcome her, or wish her the very best. And Toby Bowles, retired effective July 1st, 2021, wish her the very best. And, um, Mr. Darnell resigning, and Mrs. Darnell both resigning, they've taken positions in, uh, Adair County, and we wish them the very best, appreciate all that they've done for, uh, Russell County students. And Ms. Holly Coffey, wish her and her family well, for sure, as she has, uh, gone back home to Placquie, which her husband took, uh, another church there in Placquie County. Wish them the very best.
Superintendent's Report.
Just a couple of things to talk about, just so, and I know you all, uh, know it and appreciate, uh, media giving recognition to it, but Ms. Lindsay Williams applied for the, uh, Snapdragon Book Foundation Grant, Russell Springs Elementary School, as I've told you all, she was awarded $10,000, and, um, you know, it took a little time for her to do that, but appreciate that time, she's already talked with Ms. uh, Ms. Carnes on, on the workings of the grant and how that, how that works, um, because sometimes you get into a grant, it's a little bit hairy than what you, what you knew, but they've already got that process worked out, but just wanted to acknowledge that grant that Russell Springs Elementary School, uh, received and acknowledge Ms. Williams's, uh, work on, on getting that grant. And then, just an update for, for everybody else in, in attendance, prior to this meeting, of course, we had a working meeting, uh, lasted just right at two hours regarding the Russell County Middle School project and our asphalt, uh, project that included the track, had a really, really good discussion with Ransfield Construction and, uh, Sherman Carter Barnhart Architects and Ross Sinclair Associates regarding our bonding potential. So what kind of started this conversation and, and the need to have a working meeting was just to see which direction for certain we want to go regarding our middle school. We initially thought of, of renovation to the existing structure and, and where we're at, of course, sixth grade is, sixth grade is housed here, uh, but there exists a really good pathway, uh, for the board to build on to this existing structure, uh, and make a seventh and eighth grade wing with a new gymnasium and, and, uh, potentially a new cafeteria, um, and then, and then what would be tearing down the existing, uh, middle school. None, none of that has been decided, uh, what, what, only thing that we will do is schedule another, another meeting, we had a two-hour meeting this afternoon just to look at all the options, uh, we do have bonding, bonding potential to move forward on doing that because sixth grade is, is already housed here, and we've got a building that was built into the, in the 50s that has small classrooms, uh, we got wood trusses and, you know, there's just a lot of issues there at the middle school versus, uh, maybe look at the feasibility again, uh, building on to the A and C for seventh and eighth grade and what might potentially be a two-story structure, uh, seventh grade on one floor, eighth grade on another floor, and, um, some science lab classrooms and things like that here for the, for the middle school, and there's some other program space. Um, just keep in mind, as we discussed at that meeting, uh, we don't just arbitrarily decide the number of classrooms in a new facility, uh, or even the square footage as far as that goes, because all that is dictated by your enrollment per K D E, uh, Kentucky Department of Education, uh, regulations that have previously been, been passed. So it's something that we will, um, subsequently have a, have another meeting, um, get together and look at, and, um, see which path and direction, uh, that the board definitively wants to, uh, wants to go, because that's a decision that they, uh, will have to make. But it was great input, I appreciate, um, your all's time this afternoon, I know it's been a long time, but those two hours, I think, were very fruitful, and then I'll touch on the, um, I'll touch on the asphalt. Um, you all know, it's no, no secret to the condition of the blacktop, um, on this, uh, campus, the high school, middle school campus, and even here in front of the auditory and mandatory complex, and having said that also, our, uh, our track and field has not been able to have a home meet and much more, not, not a whole lot more than just practice really, uh, because of the condition of our track, it's, it's, it has to be eight lanes, um, there's space issues with the utility poles, and it's just not currently, uh, usable. So we did have some really rough numbers, uh, conversations with, uh, architects and Ransfield Construction, um, about, uh, that, that potential project of, of blacktopping, uh, this campus, except if the board said, "Oh, you know, not here, we may build onto the A and C," obviously we would not blacktop this parking lot area right here, because that might be taken up with work building onto the auditory and mandatory complex, but certainly, well, we could move forward with board approval on getting the A and C done, the high school done, um, but it would look at the funding mechanism of how all that works. So just a brief update for everybody that was not in that work session, uh, again, no action was taken, that will all have to formally come with, at a later point, this was just a lot of information thrown at us in two hours, they really just think that there's possibilities there of, of renovating middle school, building a new middle school for seventh and eighth grade onto this, uh, existing A and C, and then our blacktopping project. So I will be, uh, Ms. Whitaker will be getting with me at a, at a later date to, uh, probably look at, make a special call board meeting, uh, to take some, uh, affirmative action one way or the other, either renovate the existing structure and look forward with that, or, uh, build onto the A and C, or a new seventh and eighth grade wing with a new gymnasium and things like that. We, again, we have bonding potential to...
And library.
And library, and that's a library topic, yes, it would be encompassed with the new library unit center and all those things like that, certainly, uh, that we do. So I, again, I appreciate, uh, your all's time to, today on, on listening to all of that, and I appreciate, uh, Ransfield Construction and Sherman Carter Barnhart and Ross Sinclair Associates to providing all the information that they, uh, they threw out at us this afternoon. Uh, I think we'll all agree that it was, uh, very fruitful, a lot of good information talked about, and good stuff for, good stuff for kids.
I might motion to adjourn.
Ms. Whitaker didn't even ask.
I was saying...
All, all your favor? Okay. Mr. Kazook?
Ms. Robby did?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Do you still ask a few more of your questions?
They didn't want to have any questions.
We can still talk. Thank you all. Can you all please? I need you all to sign, thank you, please.